And good afternoon and welcome to the Crestwood School District Board of Education. This is a special meeting for Thursday, March 11th, 2021. And at this time, I'm going to ask that Madam Secretary take role.
Mrs. Berry?
Chair.
Ms. Elzayat?
Yes.
Ms. Fawaz?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky?
Here.
Mr. Sabah?
I'm here.
Mr. Cherry?
All right, thank you. And at this time, we will go ahead with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And Madam Secretary, if you could read the consent agenda.
The Board of Education's approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the March 11th, 2021 Board Agenda. Support.
All right, so we have a motion from Najah and support from Nadia that the recommended action is for the Board of Education's approval, I'm sorry, the Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the March 11th, 2021 Board Meeting. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 And for the record, if we could do a roll call.
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mrs. Elzayat?
Yes.
Ms. Fawaz?
No.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
All right. And at this time, we are going to have a presentation from our Superintendent, Dr. Yusuf Musalem, in regards to the reorganization plan. So this is going to give us an opportunity to just discuss some things from our previous meeting, which was on Monday. So I will turn this over to Musalem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board of Education, community. So last week, I'm sorry, not last week, this previous Monday, we had a conversation about the request of my office and our team to put forward a reorganization plan that will support the district's needs to move forward and in order to ensure that all of our members that are part of the team are receiving industry standard compensation as well as being placed in positions that will support us to grow. And a few areas that I highlighted in that conversation were in reference to, but not limited to, you know, areas that we need growth, such as curriculum, assessment, instructional strategies, social emotional development, a true hybrid program for students who struggle in secondary, as well as our ability to grow with our infrastructure and to have a classifications and contractual language that supports our current industry needs as an educational entity, but also our needs as an educational entity as we move forward. One of the areas that I discussed that I felt was very, a need for us as a district to improve, was we currently, under our non-union contractual benefits packages, we have many classifications that overlap one another with the same title, but completely different job responsibilities, roles, and technical skills needed for those positions. As a district, as we move forward and we want to create a systemic and systematic process, we feel that it's extremely important that we create classifications that meet those skill sets that are comparable to other districts in Wayne County and allows us to be a district that is marketable for the best talent. Through this reorganization plan, it will also eliminate any non-systems that we currently have and it will systemize our district to ensure that we're supporting students pre-K through 14, which is our vision as the Crestwood School District. Through this process, we have identified individuals in our current organization that can fit these roles. And we believe, as we are trying to focus on a professional mindset that focuses on progressivism as well as a solutions-based mindset, that we believe that with the individuals we have currently in our district, they can fit many of these roles easily. And they have illustrated in the last year and a half to myself and the team that they are strong-suited with the skill sets to move forward with this. I would also like to add that in public education, we are limited in terms of finding individuals who have these specific skill sets. These skill sets in the public sector are very hard to find as well as limited in terms of compensation to ensure that we can maintain, retain, and recruit in the future. Moreover, this reorganization plan focuses a great deal on our future. We currently, with our current plan, we currently are functioning as if we're a district with 3,000 students still. Our student enrollment is over 4,000 students and it is rising. We have a great problem and that is we are out of space and our infrastructure has to grow. And this is a problem that I would tell you there are about 82% of districts across the state which they had. So therefore, in order for us to truly meet the needs of our students, we must organize ourselves to not only meet the needs of our students today, but to also meet the needs of our students next year, five years, and 10 years from now. We are in a strong financial setting. The Board of Education's partnership with this administration team has allowed us to use cost-effective measures to ensure that we are putting people in positions to help. We are focusing our attention on cost-effective measures when it comes to instruction, assessment, and human resources. What I'd like to make clear to all is that in order for us to serve our students, we must invest in our human resources. And our human resources as our teachers, our custodians, our maintenance, the entire school entity and community. Therefore, in brief, what I'm asking is if the Board of Education will approve our, and this is not the motion, but this is the direction, this reorganization plan to assist us in taking our district to the next level. This reorganization plan will not put a burden or will not stymie our economic progress or financial progress. We are strong there. Moreover, this reorganization plan will be using and benefiting from our grant funding, which is our Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, as well as 31A grant funding. These grant funds are specifically designed for this reorganization plan to assist in social emotional development, infrastructure development, technology development, curriculum development, assessment development. Moreover, it is designed to, all of that, to look at the whole child. And by looking at the whole child, we're talking about all children, from grade preschool through grade 14, our special education students, our Title I students, our 31A at-risk students, and our advanced placement students. So through this reorganization plan, we believe that it will give us the strength and it will position us to be a true competitor in this market. Education is competition. And part of that competition is we have to ensure that every citizen that lives in the Crestwood community and that attends the Crestwood School District, that this is their first choice. And through this reorganization plan, we believe we have the skill sets of individuals who can take this reorganization plan to the next level. And two of the positions that will really assist us in moving to the next level will be our school improvement and student services specialist as well as our instruction and assessment specialist. These two positions are going to help us support students and closing the gap, but more importantly, help teachers, administrators, peer professionals, and all staff support their students by supporting them. Our teachers have a large workload, day in and day out. Their responsibilities are the most important responsibilities in this district, more than my responsibility. My responsibility is to ensure that we have individuals that can support them so that we don't put the burden of not, of just, we don't put the burden of educating every child, but also of not having support mechanisms to help them be successful. And these two positions will do so. Moreover, with a student body of over 4,000 students, our English language learner student population is growing to over almost 30%. Our at-risk free reduced lunch population is growing to over 70%. And that doesn't include the many students who may not be considered quote-unquote "at risk", but have at-risk tendencies. Therefore, by moving forward with this organization plan, we can support those students, but also we'll be supporting our staff in the classroom with an additional set of hands to help them move to the next level. Our growth as a district is going to come from within and we need to continue to grow and build from within. Our infrastructure needs have increased tremendously. We currently are in need of infrastructure and therefore, our custodial and maintenance teams have been pushed to the limit and they have really done a great job during this pandemic to ensure that we get where we need to be. And finally, I want to ensure that every staff member here in the Crestwood School District has a comparable salary to other individuals in the county of Wayne that work in the same job responsibility. I believe that is fair for our team, it does not put us in an economic burden, and I believe that it'll send the right message that our focus is of a positive and solutions-based mindset, that we are not a district that has a deficit mindset where we're finding problems and trying to Band-Aid them, but we're looking towards a future for success. That is my summarization of our discussion from Monday and I will turn it back over to you, President Garcia.
Thank you, Dr. Musalem. So I had been contacted by members over the course of those first two days, or those, the day of the presentation and the day after, so that they felt that this was an item that needed to come back so that it could be discussed, it was fresh in their minds. So I appreciate you giving us that refresher. And it is no doubt, and I don't want to take away from any of the colleagues, but there is no doubt that this is something that's truly important for the growth of the district as a whole. So with that, I would like to give the opportunity of the board that is here, some, that may have questions for you regarding this, that opportunity.
I think we have to.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct. We do have to move with the motion first so that we can open it up for discussion.
Mr. President.
Mrs.?
I didn't read the motion yet.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
My apologies.
Just walk home over me, it's okay.
So, just so we don't miss protocol, my apologies, Trusty Kaminsky. So I, as a superintendent, am recommending that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the 2021 reorganization plan as presented.
Mr. Chair.
Sue.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the 2021 reorganization plan as presented by Superintendent Dr. Yusuf Musalem.
And so we have a motion from Sue with support from Najah that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the 2021 reorganization plan as presented by Superintendent Dr. Yusuf Musalem. Now we can open it up the floor for questions. All right, and Mo, you had your hand up first.
I did, thank you.
Your vote.
Dr. Musalem, I am in full agreement that we have got to be a destination district and I think we have to take care of our teachers. So I want to open up with that, but I have some questions for you, please.
Yes, of course.
And it's more around the reorganization. Is there, was there a timeframe for this reorg and why? Is the first question. And why not open up the, and I know you mentioned that, you know, the pool of candidates would be much smaller than it would be, as I think you used in the corporate setting. Why not open this up to, you know, to other potential candidates outside of the district? Or was there a timeframe for this organization that you're doing this reorg?
Thank you, Trusty Sabah. Two very fair questions. First, the timeframe is that we have three positions that we would like to make immediate and that is based on the immediate need, where all other positions would be phased in by July 1 of 2021. And that is due to the different contracts that different employees have. The purpose of bringing it to the board this early is so that if the board does agree to move forward with this reorganization plan, it gives us time to get people moving in the direction they need to move. Moreover, for us to post positions that need to be posted due to the reorganization of current staff so that we can, we're not in a crunch and we can have individuals in place for an easy transition into next school year. In reference to not opening up the internal moves based on the new positions, is in the last year and a half, as I've been saying constantly, is this pandemic has worn on all of us, but it has also given myself and the team enough time to look and to observe and to evaluate who we have on the team currently. And I have a firm belief that, you know, I'm going to use the metaphor of the bus. You know, everyone has a certain set of skill sets and if we put them on the right seat on the bus, they're going to be successful. And I always say that, you know, people may think the superintendent is the one that's always driving the bus, but that's not the case. Because ultimately, at times, I need to move people around so that we're taking turns driving the bus. I may be putting the air in the tire. They have the skill sets that are needed to get the job done and to get the job done immediately. Where in turn, if we open it, to me, our focus is getting away from this deficit mindset, moving towards the. And when we have individuals who we know have specific skill sets that can jump into a position and get things moving immediately, that's not only going to help the district, but it's going to help our students. Moreover, I also believe in rewarding people for the skills and for the accomplishments that they have already been part of. And if we're going to continue to grow our team internally and we know we have people that are identified that can do that job because they're already doing it, but it's something we need them to focus their entire time on because we have the ability to do so, to take us to the next level, I believe that it's a positive reinforcement to everyone in the district that, look, there is a possibility for internal growth. And finally, in this year and a half, I have had many conversations with many people that are part of this team. And the recommendations that I'm making for the individuals to be moved into this reorganization plan is based off of a year and a half of conversations, observations, and discussions. And I, as the superintendent, truly believe that this will help us move the district to the next level.
So in other words, every day is an interview, especially if you're within. One last question for you, doctor, is the two positions that you're creating are comp-neutral, correct, with the moves?
Currently, it is confidential, yes.
My apologies.
No worries, it's just because I did not want to release any of this plan until.
My apologies.
That's okay.
My apologies.
No, no worries.
No need to answer the question.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Mo. Are there any other questions from anyone here at the board? Concerns, comments, anything that you'd like to add?
I have a question.
Yes, Salwa.
So to kind of pick you up back off what he was saying and what you were saying, Dr. Musalem, about rewarding people and their skills and for the ones that are already currently there. With some of the people, I guess, you want to give them that positive reinforcement. However, I think we're possibly alienating others that maybe could have put in for the job but weren't given the opportunity. Because you have, you have some people in there within this, you know, list or reorg that haven't had, you know, haven't had a PR yet or haven't even been there a year yet. So I guess, and one aspect, yes, we're, you know, providing positive reinforcement for one group, but I feel like we're alienating another.
Trusty Fawaz, I appreciate that sentiment, but I respectfully have to disagree because I have been interacting with as many people as possible that have the certifications and/or qualifications for these types of positions. And these types of positions, we are a smaller district and there are not many people with administrative experience currently in our district. And these are administrative roles that you have to have a special skill set for. And I don't look at it as alienating others, I don't look at it as alienating others who are not getting the position. I'm looking at it in reference to, if you are willing to grow and to take yourself to the next level, we're here to support you. And I will say, the skill sets in our district vary. And with the skill sets that the individuals have through this reorganization plan, I have not seen those skill sets with other members at the same level as them. And my door is always open. And after every interview or after every opportunity somebody has for a position, when they come to see me or Dr. Lazar, we have a very constructive conversation with them on the things they need to do in order to improve, what will take them to the next level. I would be remiss if I did not say this. Our district has not done a very good job in the past of developing its leaders. This is the first step in that direction. And as we move forward, this reorganization plan will allow that to happen. And for individuals who feel that they may have been looked over, Dr. Lazar and I, our doors are open. We will have a constructive but poignant conversation with them because our goal is to take the Crestwood Schools to a level of professionalism beyond just the education standards. And these individuals that we're speaking of, they have done so, but they're in positions right now where they're doing the job that needs to be done, but they can help us more in these new positions in order for us to go to the next level. And we are in a time crunch. We're going to be coming out of this pandemic very soon and we need to get many a things done. And I will, last thing I would like to say is that these individuals that are listed all were crucial and part of eliminating multiple state and federal complaints that were with this district for multiple years until our team put them in positions where they could take leadership and get us out of those complaints. Therefore, they've earned my trust, my gratitude, and I really believe these are the individuals that will take us to the next level. And I will work with anyone who feels that they were slighted because I will tell you, and I will reiterate, you can speak to anyone that has met with Dr. Lazar and I. We are very respectful and very professional, but we're strictly to the point and we give specific advice on how we think individuals can grow to take our district to the next level.
All right, thank you. Danielle?
Yep, I just, I have a comment more than a question. When I took a look at this information, I wanted to commend Dr. Musalem on his strategic reorganization thinking. I personally feel good that two individuals will be able to be mentors to new individuals. That's one of the pieces that I took away with. And also, I'd like everybody to, you know, I'd like to comment that it takes a true leader to advocate for their staff before even advocating for themselves. And we all know Dr. Musalem came into a lot more than even he thought he could expect. So respectfully, those are my comments.
Thank you, Danielle. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I really didn't want to comment, but I have to comment.
No, please.
And what I'd like to say is with everything that we're doing and we've done in this district, to me, this is the largest, how do I want to say it? The most important expense that we will ever have to know what the student growth is. These are the things that we never were able to see. And we're finally going to be able to see these results and to see the investment. It's a return on our children and there's nothing more important than that to me. So I'm just thrilled to finally see that we're heading in that direction. And I want to thank you for that.
I think that was the most excitement that I've seen from Nadia. No, but it's true, it's true.
These are the things that we've been wanting to see.
Yes, no, you're right, you're right.
We want to see the student growth, this is what it's about. We want to invest in the children and this is how we're doing it.
You know, I'd like to say something and you've recapped, you refreshed it again. Where certain individuals are going, they have qualifications, they have certifications, they have things that others don't have. You know, you might have a fifth grade teacher apply for a principalship but has absolutely no credentials to support the move. Work on it and then that can happen. But in this case here, the movement that's been done has been very, it shows, it's been very strategic. Those individuals have worked with you, you have worked with them. And they are there for the growth of the district. And they're internal, they're here. They're ready to work, they're ready to hit the ground running, as it's always said. So I think this is a fantastic plan. Again, I was able to hear from them and there's been conversation, you know, just take a look at the packet, reread it, refresh it, and you did a good job in redoing that again, so thank you. Yes, Sue.
So thank you, Dr. Musalem, because I also like the retain and gain approach. And I think in order for our district to become more solid and to show growth for our students, we have to show faith in our staff. We want to retain the staff that is so good. And others, you know, if they choose not to stay, that's fine. But the staff that have gone above and beyond need to be recognized and rewarded and we want to retain them. And if we don't do from within, we lose the, we risk the chance of them looking elsewhere. So I applaud you. I think it's a very thought-out process for the community that's watching. We had about an inch and a half packet of papers to go through on this. So it's not something that any of us just looked at today before the meeting. It was a lot of reading and a lot of time, so I appreciate that. And I'm glad you put it in perspective for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Najah, was there anything from you?
Nothing that I really would add. I mean, I think everybody's kind of covered anything that I would say. And I change and I like the direction and I, after going through each individual person, whether I know them personally or I've heard about them, I mean, I feel like it's, as Danielle said, you know, strategic and it's, I couldn't be happier with the direction that we're going in. So I'm happy with what I see, so.
The investment in the children.
All right. All right then. So we've had the motion on the table, there has been some discussion. And hearing no others, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Okay, so we will take a roll call.
Mrs. Berry?
Abstain.
Mrs. Berry abstain. Mrs. Elzayat? Mrs. Elzayat?
Yes.
Your vote is a yes? Yes. Mrs. Fawaz?
You know, I'm sorry, I got cut off.
Oh, okay.
I was saying yes, and I was saying yes because you were calling my name.
Okay.
You got cut off, so I didn't get to hear the whole motion.
Oh, I can read it for you, or I'm sorry, it would be.
The recommended action that the Crestwood Board of Education approves the 2021 reorganization plan is presented by Superintendent Dr. Musalem. And I was taking role, but if you didn't, I guess, can we just do it over?
Thanks, Najah, I'm sorry, my vote is yes.
Okay. Mrs. Fawaz?
Nay.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, your motion passes.
All right, so we have a motion that has passed. We are moving up the. We are moving up to the next level. Congratulations on this. And we've had, again, some lengthy conversation. I'm excited, we've been excited, we wanted to see something. And, and I think, Mo, I'm going to take a word right from you. This is a destination place for families with children who want to have that. Pre-K. To 12.
P-14.
The, the absolute superior of an education. But in order to do that, they have to have the top-notch quality instructors and administrators to administer what it is that Crestwood needs to do. And this is the Ja. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Board. I appreciate the questions, I appreciate your confidence, and you will continuously get updates on the progression of the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Nope, I think I just have some formalities here. And that would be just at the end. Are there any members from the community that have any questions? Okay, all right. And there are no other board questions or comments?
No.
Seeing none, no hands, and no little hands on the screen. So with that, yes, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So I heard the motion from Nadia, support, wait. From, and supported from Sue, that the, we adjourn, and the time is at 5:30. So with that, thank you very much, and we will see everyone. Oh, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed, hearing none, we are adjourned, and thank you. We'll see you soon.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Trustee.
Thank you, everybody.